To.
Hafada, welcome everyone. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, October 13th, 2021. The time is 1:06 PM. Notices for this oversight hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, October 6th, and again on Monday, October 11th. And notices were also published in the Guam Daily Post on October 6th and October 11th, 2021. The Zoom here, this Zoom hearing is hosted by the Guam Legislature's MIS staff and my committee staff. I thank you all for your assistance in this regard. The host of the hearing will mute all Zoom participants until caught upon by the chair. I want to thank our ASL interpreter services that are being provided today by Ms. Kirsten Rosario from Guahan Sign Language Interpreters to help to accommodate the deaf and hard of hearing community viewing today's hearing. And we thank, we thank you again. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. I'd like to thank my colleagues for being here, beginning with Senator Telo Titigui. Thank you, Senator, and Senator Joanne Brown, she's as Mossy for being here. I'd also like to thank, of course, the Department of Integrated Services for individuals with disabilities for attending this afternoon's hearing. The agenda for today's public hearing is an oversight hearing with the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. The Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, or DISIT, was established under Guam Public Law 24-16 in March 26th as a designated single point of entry agency within the government of Guam that provides, promotes, and ensures a full continuum of lifelong programs and services that allow for independence, productivity, and inclusion of people with disabilities into the community. This oversight hearing is an opportunity to hear from the department on their fiscal year 2021 progress, their FY22 budget and their plans for FY22, and other projects or topics that they would like us and the public to be aware of. As with that, we will get started and I want to thank, I also see present here, Michelle Agueki, who is the Associate Director of Guam Cedars. We also have the Executive Director of the Guam Developmental Disabilities Council, who is Jermaine Alerta. And we have Edmund Cruz of the Guam Client Assistance Program, and Gabby Ujowa from, who is also a UOG Social Work intern at Cedars. Thank you, and Anne Alau from DISIT. And of course, we will be particularly speaking with the Director of DISIT is Phyllis Leong-Guero, and the Deputy Director of DISIT, Michelle Perez. Thank you again. All right, I'm going, they have a presentation for us, so I'm going to allow them to begin. And Director, thank you again.
Hafada, Madam Speaker, Senator Brown, Senator Titigui, and everyone else on the panel. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present today. My name is Michelle Perez, Deputy Director for the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, also known as DISIT. With me today is Rita Sotomayor, our Acting Vocational Rehabilitation Administrator, as well as some of our DISIT staff who have taken time out of their busy schedule to attend today's hearing. I can go ahead and if we can start the slide presentation now? Speaker? If we're able to start this slide presentation?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, I'm setting it up. Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and talk about DISIT's mission until this slide presentation comes up. As mentioned earlier by the speaker, DISIT's mission is to improve services for persons with disabilities by serving as a single point of entry to provide, promote, and ensure a full continuum of lifelong programs and services that allows for independence, productivity, and inclusion into the community. DISIT's are also build partnerships with local and federal governments and recognize the efforts of all organizations and agencies associated with providing quality services to persons with disabilities. As mentioned earlier by the speaker, public, as per Public Law 24-16, DISIT serves as a public service to coordinate and provide comprehensive community services and vocational rehabilitation services for eligible individuals with disabilities. As such, we have two divisions that were established, the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation and the Division of Support Services. I'm not quite sure if, I can go ahead and continue without the PowerPoint for now, so that we won't waste any time, if that's okay. So with the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, also known as DVR, it provides vocational rehabilitation services to eligible individuals with disabilities and is the designated state unit to administer the state plan for vocational rehabilitation services. The primary funding source for the division is the VR grant that is 78.7% federally funded by the US Department of Education Rehabilitation Services Administration with a state match requirement of 21.3%. The VR programs support a wide range of services designed to help individuals with disabilities prepare for and engage in gainful employment consistent with their strengths, their resources, priorities, concerns, abilities, capabilities, and the interests, and to make informed choices. Some of the goals of DVR include to increase a total number of DVR clients and also successful closures, to secure a case management tracking system that will enable DVR to track the required data to meet the reporting requirements, to improve VR transition services for youth with disabilities who are in high school and are preparing to transition into the workforce or post-secondary education. We can move to, go ahead, move to slide three, if anything. We're at slide three already. Okay? We are, we also want to enhance the community rehabilitation provider service delivery system through greater outreach, training, evaluation, and development of new CRPs. We'd also like to promote and market vocational rehabilitation services to the community and to increase the pre-employment training skills programs in the high school. Next slide, please. VR would like to establish the Blind Enterprise Program, which is also the BEP through the following projected timeline. So we're on slide four. There we go. So in fourth quarter of fiscal year 2022, we'd like to conduct a survey on how many individuals in Guam who are blind and will meet the qualifications to be blind, a blind vendor, or who may want to be part of the Blind Vendor Committee. We also like to conduct surveys to find out how many vending facilities on Guam are there, there are on Guam, excuse me, that will meet the established guidelines, inclusive of identifying any of the active DVR blind clients that may be interested and meet the qualifications to undergo the training to become a blind vendor under BEP. In the third quarter of fiscal year 2023, we'd like to establish a Committee of Blind Vendors. This committee will participate actively with the State Licensing Agency in major administrative decisions and policy and program development, which will affect the overall administration of Guam's vending facilities program. They shall receive grievances of blind licenses, initiate action and service advocates of the blind licensing. Next slide, please. In the fourth quarter, which will be fiscal year 2023, we would like to develop the infrastructure of personnel needed to run this program and recruit to fill those positions. This is through coordination with, with other VR state agencies and the grant, grantor agency. DVR would like to develop a comprehensive training program for the clients who are blind to pass in order to qualify for the program. In the interim, clients will undergo training at the New Visions Program in Haukona, Hawaii, and receive a certification of completion. In addition, we'd like to develop the policies and procedures for the selection of a blind client to be a blind vendor under the BEP and identify a site to store the equipment and supplies for this program. Slide six, next slide, please. The second division of DISIT, oh, is the Division of Support Services. DSS is responsible for the development of a community service delivery system, which includes the design, implementation, administration, coordination, monitoring, and evaluation of programs and services for persons with disabilities within the limits of the local and federal resources that are allocated. The divisions, the division, along with the Director's Office, is supported through the general and healthy future funds. The goal of DSS is to increase the number of individuals served through quality programs and services that promote independence and affirm the dignity of individuals with disabilities. In addition, goals for DSS is to continue to collaborate with nonprofit organizations such as West Care, American Red Cross, the Salvation Army, the Lions Club Catholic Social Services. We've also part Guam DDC to increase services to, I'm sorry, to increase the government of Guam and community partnership. We'd also like to continue with advocating and supporting having SSI income for Guam with the support of the governor, the lieutenant governor, the legislature, the attorney general, the congressman, and others that have, that others have advocated for, for SSI on Guam. Next slide, please. DSS social workers assist clients with requiring services and submit referrals to the following agencies and organizations, such as GURA. GURA is, is the top requested assistance program that we have had with our clients. As you know, GURA provides public housing on the Section 8 voucher program. Some of the programs that we have assisted our clients in applying for and pay the emergency housing voucher program for clients under the age of 16, 62 years. There is a non-elderly disabled on the mainstream housing program. We've also assisted clients 62 years of age with disabilities and order with the project-based program. And lastly, those who are chronic homeless and disabled, we've also made referrals to the Housing First Program. We also make referrals to the other agencies and entities listed, which include Public Health, Catholic Social Services, Guam Behavioral Salvation Army, GRTA, DRTA, Guam Cedars and GSAT for Systemic Technology.
Do we take? Go ahead.
Sorry?
Deputy Director, could we pause for one second? I want to make sure that the ASL is being shown on the YouTube channel or the TV channel. We could just, audio, can you confirm that?
Yes, Speaker, it's on.
Okay, because we received a call in my office that said they, they couldn't see it. All right, thank you, please proceed, I'm sorry.
Am I speaking too quickly for the ASL interpreter? I also like, I apologize, I did not ask earlier. Okay, thank you, thank you, Kristen. And then also the most recent referrals that we've been working with is for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for our clients, which is through DOA. Next slide, please. DISIT received the contracts for the following programs in July of 2021. These services are contracted through Catholic Social Services, and DISIT has successfully negotiated with CSS to continue the services for fiscal year 2022. They consist of the Respite Care and Personal Care Attendant Services, Community Rehabilitation Program, known as CHP, and the Adult Day Services, as well as CARE dot group sounds A, B, and C. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
If I could just interject again, I just want to state that, so most of the slides are just, they're all words and they're being read by the Deputy Director, all of the words. There, there are no other images that I've seen on the slides except for these words. And so the words are all being conveyed through the Deputy Director and the interpreter. Thank you.
So can we go back two slides? I apologize, back to respite. There we go. So the first program that I just like to give an overview for, for the general public that does not know about the programs that we have acquired from Guam Behavioral that were transferred back would be respite care and personal care attendant services. And respite care services provides relief or respite to a non-paid caregiver of a child or adult with a chronic disability or terminal illness. The service provides personal care attendant services as well to individuals with disabilities. It provides temporary non-medical care in the home, including companion care and direct hands-on personal care. The goal of this program is to provide relief to the caregiver so they can meet, so they can take time for themselves to help ease the stress from caregiving. The program also provides, like mentioned earlier, is personal care attendant services to individuals with disabilities to encourage independent living for as long as possible. Individuals are provided 16 hours of services each month. A qualified individual will be referred to either respite services or personal care attendant services but cannot afford to go. The total number of consumers being served today is 30 in this program. They provide assistance, for example, with meal preparation and dining, personal care services to include bathing, grooming, and other personal hygiene services. They also provide lighthouse keeping. They also provide laundry, laundry, which is washing of consumers' clothing, also helps with shopping errands and escorting. Nurses assistants may perform this activity only when a family member is not available. So those are some of the things that respite care, the personal care attendant program offers at this time. Next slide, please. The next program is Community Rehabilitation Program and Adult Services. So this, these services provide activities for individuals ages 18 and over who have severe intellectual developmental delays and significant disabilities. The program provides at least six hours of services to people with significant disabilities, meaning independent life skills, training, and other services to engage in socialization and integration in the community. As of today, the number of consumers being served is 10. Some of the services provided include skills training and certain such things as personal grooming, toilet training, bathing, and taking a shower, how to use the public transportation, preparing simple meals, also recognizing figures in the community, for example, police officers, mayors, fire safety personnel, governors, and even senators. They've also are learning to recognize survival words and signs in the home and in the community. They learn basic academics, basic money, money management. They are also afforded the opportunity to shop for personal needs and how to budget. They recognize home surroundings, landmarks, and community outings into businesses, and they use these learned skills on outings as well as learning to perform domestic chores. Can we move to the next slide, please? And the last program that was trying, that we acquired is the CARE dot group homes. And the program offers 24-hour residential placement and support services for adult consumers 18 years or older with persistent developmental and cognitive intellectual disabilities. The number of consumers being served today is 22. Now CARE dot is, the program consists of three group homes, which starts off with CARE dot A, which is considered a level one, and it consists of consumers who are, who require a highly structured environment. They require a total or extensive personal care and, and, and intense or constant supervision. These individuals require close monitoring and ongoing assistance with activities of daily living and may have a significant or severe behavioral concern. The second CARE dot home is considered a level two home, where is consistent of consumers who require a moderate structure of environment. They require extensive or regular personal care and/or constant close supervision. They require moderate assistance with activities of daily living and may have moderate or minimal behavioral concerns. Lastly, CARE dot C, which is level three, consists of consumers who require a moderate to minimal structured environment. They require regular, limited, or infrequent assistance with daily living activities and/or minimal supervision. These individuals have minimal behavior concerns in this category. Now, I'd like to mention that although CSS has these three group homes, they are at capacity at this point. So what DISIT will be doing is to continue to receive clients and continue to receive the referrals. However, DISIT will have to establish a list until any vacancies are available or if there's any funding available to expand the services that we currently have. Okay, so I can go ahead and go on to the next slide. Some of the accomplishments that we would like to share with the community is in 2019, DVR, we established an inter-agency agreement. And so with that, we also established a DVR task force with DOE. It was comprised of VR counselors, the VRA, and GDOE transition coordinators to include training personnel to ensure that both agencies are following guidelines established through the inter-agency agreement and to address any matters related to VR transition services or pre-employment transition services. Next slide, oh, I'm so sorry. Um, we've also partnered with mayor's offices to establish a vaccination site for individuals with disabilities, their families, and the general public. A total of 50 individuals with disabilities received their vaccinations. I'd also like to point out that we also worked, other agencies were involved, like Guam Legal Services was involved in this, in this project, as well as Cedars and the GDC Council. We also have, like I mentioned earlier, the Catholic Social Services contracts were also transferred to us in July of 2021. And we've also established an MOA with Jipway for the transfer, once the transfer was made, so that we could continue to have support from Jipway with the services that were being provided. Next slide, please. We've completed the RFP process, as mentioned earlier, and we were able to successfully negotiate contracts to continue the services. We are working closely with Public Health to get the, to utilize the Get Care program for DSS so that we can get better data in order to avail to other grants, opportunities, and funding opportunities. We've done outreach with, by partnering up with OHA to provide in-person outreach activities to several locations on island from Daddy Don, I believe, down to down south. We have our DISIT social workers who have actually gone autumn beyond and extended outreach to clients through home visits and in any other areas, whether they did have a home or not, even during P4 too. We partnered with tri-agencies to implement the Vaccination Access Project for individuals with disabilities, which is the 311 flyer. We provide ADA workshops to government of Guam agencies. We provide disability awareness and sensitivity, sensitivity training to GOB Guam employees from various agencies. Next slide, please. We've also provided ADA support to ensure compliance during the vaccine, at the vaccination side at UOG that is being monitored and run by the Guam National Guard. We have been in partnership with GRTA to, with regards to the AMBO mobile app. We've assisted individuals with disabilities during the application process for POA that would be with our DVR clients. Active member, we are an active member of the Guam Homeless Coalition Organization. We provided ADA support to GOB Guam agencies and private companies, and we provided virtual presentations for the, this year's 31st anniversary of ADA. Next slide, please. In addition, we've collaborated with GRT and the All Rise Program as a distribution site, but just inclusive of a distribution site, we also assisted both clients and general public that did come into our office with the completion of applications, both hard copy and online. So we provided some online access for them. We also provided desktop computers to mayor's offices for both DISIT clients and the general public to apply online. And we've collaborated with Guam Developmental Disabilities Council to identify gaps in services for individuals of this, for individuals with disabilities and their families. Next slide, please. So obviously with accomplishments and just like with any other agency and entity, there are challenges. And DISIT continues to face these challenges, one of the most being filling critical positions. We are in critical need for DSS social workers, community program needs, and program coordinators to include the DVR administration, the DVR administrator, which has adversely impacted the operations mostly, especially in the Support Services Division. And as with any other government agency, I'm not sure, I'm also thinking, private agencies, social workers have been a big hot commodity that is really difficult for all agencies to acquire. Accessibility for online government resources, we have been working closely. We have been working closely with OTAC, more specifically the CTO on this major project to get all GOB Guam agency websites to be accessible. During my last conversation with, with OTAC, they are projecting that to have the software by the end of the year. The Lieutenant Governor and the Governor have been in full support of this initiative as well as other accessible programs that we have been collaborating on with them. Complying with the 2% law, so DISIT has had conversations with several senators regarding how this law is written. And with those, within those conversations, we've, it has been noted that DVR cannot certify disability or certify if an individual meets the criteria of a certain job. So we can, we can however, provide a certification stating that the individual is a client of DVR. DOE is the agency that receives employment applications for the line agencies. Then they would be the entity to determine if the individual even meets the criteria for the position being applied for.
So do you? Are you deputy, you mean DOA, not DOA?
Sorry, yes, sorry. Thank you, Speaker, I'm a little nervous. DOA would have access to the data on individuals who meet the 2% and those agencies that are in compliance and who may need to need assistance in meeting compliance. So as mentioned, the need for social workers is critical to provide services. We have a total of three social workers, and we recently were informed that one of our social workers will be on extended medical leave. Just this morning, we received three more clients just within the last few hours. So you know, our social workers are really working hard to, to provide the service that we can with the resources that we do have. Now, the existing BRE case tracking system has been, is obsolete and has been an obstacle to replace, but it continues to be, and it continues to be a challenge. But we are continuously working with GSA and trying to get a system up and running. Now, if you notice with the, just to give you a little more clarification, for DSS itself, new clients per month, and an average is 20, 20 new clients per month, and I believe it's, it's just increased since it's increased a lot more with the pandemic, as I'm sure everyone would be, would, can understand, more or less for housing and other caregiving services. With DVR as well, they receive about eight applicants per month. That also is due to the fact of the pandemic, you know, and not people not wanting to come in to seek services as, as often as they used to, as well as trying to reach out to the schools with transition and getting them into DVR programs after high school. Now, some of the other Now, some of the other. Services and inquiries I just kind of wanted to bring up was, was that we hear all the time is basically. Caregiving services, assistive technology, devices and equipment, they call, you know, constituents call in and asking for assistance. And these are just some of the items that they do ask for and of course monetary assistance, so. You know, it is a challenge, but we do what we can and we try and collaborate with other agencies and entities to provide. Whatever services we can to meet their needs. So in closing, I just wanted to say that even with the challenges faced by the pandemic. Limited resources and personnel, DISIT's hardworking and dedicated staff have continued to provide services for our clients. I am honored to work with the team of dedicated and selfless individuals. Who truly care about the well-being of individuals with disabilities and their families on Guam. Once again, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present and highlight DISIT's mission for the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director Michelle Paris for that presentation. So just for those who are listening, the presentation was primarily a blue background of. PowerPoint, so different slides with words on it, that's, that's. That's what constituted the presentation, there were no other. Pictures or anything on the presentation except for the DISIT seal at the very end with the words, thank you. Other than that, all the slides were blue background with white words, which the Deputy Director read. All the words that were on those slides, thank you again Deputy Director. All right, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Amanda Shelton, our Legislative Secretary, thank you Senator. And she joins, of course, Senator Titekwe and Senator Brown. We also, we just heard from the Deputy Director of DISIT. Also with her is Anne Anunlau and Rita Sotomayor just from DISIT. And our A S L interpreter Kirsten Rosario. We have the Executive Director Jermaine Alerta from Guam Developmental Disabilities Council. We have Edmund Cruz from the Guam Client Assistance Program. We have Gabby Yujoa, who is a U O G social work intern from Cedars. Michelle Agigee, also from Cedars. And Attorney Daniel Summerfleck from Guam Legal Services Corporation. All right. We're going to, I'm going to open, yes, Attorney Daniel, Attorney.
I guess I'm recognized so I can speak, my question is.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one second, I would, would you like, or do you want to give a presentation? I was going to open it up for the senators and to, to ask questions first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna ask a question.
Of the, of the DISIT?
Of the DISIT, yeah.
Okay, all right, let's, let's, let me open it up for the senators first and then we'll, we'll receive questions or comments from those.
Understood, I'll place it in the chat.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll begin with Senator Titekwe.
To just, Madam Speaker, I had to chime in and out, but I'm thankful for the presentation that was brought to us. It's very thorough, let's just realize the issues that, that you're having at DISIT and the need. So I don't have any questions at this time, I'd like to continue on and listen. But I wanted just to thank you so much for this presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the presentation, it was a lot of information and. I'm, I'm certainly hopeful we'll be able to review the slide presentation that was provided. But I think what would be more helpful, I appreciate all the services that DISIT is providing, but it would be good to give us an idea. Of the number of clients in each of those categories that DISIT is assisting, I think that would give the public. You know, very good understanding of where we're at with regards to the type of needs and assistance that is being provided. And to what degree the government can provide assistance, I know we expect the government to do a lot of things. But you know, it's always a question of, I understand it's following the law, but it's also a question of what resources and personnel. Are available to provide that, so is that something that DISIT has readily available to enlighten us on? You know, the number of clients so that we know exactly what we're funding and where is there a greater need? Or is there a greater need of certain services that DISIT provides versus other needs? I think that would be, be good if we can get some feedback on that, that would give us a better picture of, of exactly what are some of the issues that DISIT is. Is dealing with with regards to providing these types of client services.
Thank you for the question, Senator Brown, so I can speak on the Support Services side. With the amount of clients that we have today. Total with inclusive of the new three clients that we just got, for each social worker, we have a caseload of a hundred and fifty. Per case, per social worker.
Is that something, and I mean, you might not be able to do it today during this presentation, but I think it would be good. With, with the presentation that was provided to give us an idea per category. You know, on average, how many people are you servicing, again, that'd give us a better perspective across the board. Of, you know, what type of services and where the greater demand is or where those services are being provided so that we have a clearer picture. Of what type of services and needs are out there in the community with regards to your department that that's being provided. But that is a very high number, a hundred and fifty cases. Per social, and how many do you have all right now that are able to go out and do this type of outreach service?
We have three social workers total, however, one, we were just informed yesterday that he, he will be on extended medical leave. So we're just kind of covering down right now with the, with the, with the resources that we do have, but I will.
Yeah, that would be. And how many employees overall do you have at DISIT altogether, including, you know, including you and the director? How many, how many personnel overall for DISIT?
I'm sorry, we have a total of eighteen. Eighteen employees, however, it's for, it's inclusive of both divisions. So the Division of Support Services has a total of three, which is the three social workers.
Okay.
The, then of course myself and the Director and then our Secretary, Ms. Anne Anunlau. And then D B R has the, the others.
And then I wanted, I will, and then I wanted to ask, because this came up earlier this year in dealing with the budget. I see that mental health has returned some responsibilities to DISIT. And we're aware that that was transferred, but we understand there was staffing, I guess staffing personnel that were. At Behavioral Health, I believe that were performing these or overseeing these contracts for providing these services. And they, they didn't get transferred with the additional responsibilities that were placed on your agency. If you can enlighten us what exactly was involved with that in the public. And perhaps why there was no additional staffing support provided, was there a need for that to be transferred? Or are you guys able, because you're a relatively small agency considering the amount of services and responsibilities you need to provide? What, what is the status of all that with the additional responsibilities that have been returned to you to oversee? From Behavioral Health?
So I'll go ahead and defer to Ms. Rita Sotomayor because she is also part of the H R division. So she has more institutional knowledge regarding. So.
Okay, um. When the contracts were transferred, there were no staff that. That transferred along with, with the contracts. However, DISIT is trying to recruit for more social workers. We did put it in our budget, however, when the budget was passed that they were zero funded. But. DISIT management continues to try to see if they can get additional funding to hire more social workers.
Clarify what type of contracts were transferred back, what, what responsibility? And was this ever originally with DISIT and ever transferred to Behavioral Health? And is being transferred back, what, what is the history with that? Just to give us an understanding, give the public an understanding about, about these contracts.
So Senator Brown, there was, DISIT originally had the. Contracts, however, what had happened was there was a permanent injunction. From my understanding, there was a permanent injunction which ended up transferring the programs to Guam Behavioral. So that's how, that's how it, it transpired.
And what type of services were provided under those contracts, what type of services are provided?
Their services were the Community Habilitation Program, right?
Yes.
And the.
Everything, it's contracts that were transferred now. One of them is CARE Dad, which, which is a program that. Is actually the amount, even the funding for it, we've never, DISIT never had that contract in the past. But DISIT did have the C H P, the Community Habilitation Program, and the rest.
And what's, and what's involved with that, I mean, it's, I hear the title, what, what, what is actually involved in that? Just to give us a better understanding, what, what type of services are provided with that program?
The Community Habilitation Program basically provides like day services to help individuals with learning basics. Life skills and it can also go into learning some vocational skills for. That's what, that's what that program specifically is for. And then the Respite Care Program, which is. For, to provide respite to families of individuals who are caring for their, their, their family members with disabilities. So they would go into the home and they would provide some sort of respite, whether it be for the families to go out and. Go shopping and then they would, they'd be there to, to take care of the, the member that is disabled. And they also provide. So that's what, that's, those were the programs that were originally from DISIT.
And so you guys contract that service out to another entity then that, that hires personnel and goes out and performs those services?
Yes, ma'am, so Catholic Social Services has been doing it for several years, so they provide that service.
Okay, and then, and then when this, when this, you know, I heard the whole history with the permanent injunction when that happened. I mean, I know it's before your time, but when this was transferred from, from your agency to Behavioral Health. Were there personnel resources transferred out of your agency to Behavioral Health at the time? Or was it just simply the contract responsibilities?
I believe, Rita.
Um, there were a few social workers that, who transferred with. At the time when the contracts went to, from DISIT to Behavioral Health. And one program coordinator.
And were any of those personnel involved in overseeing these contracts? Or were they just performing their respective duties as social workers and so forth?
I would think the program coordinator had a lot to do with the. Just, you know, working to announce the R F E and so forth and, and look over the contracts and the expenditures. As far as the social workers, I'm not too sure their involvement in the. On the overall, I, you know, because like they do, do. They do oversee the clients that come in into the DISIT. And then like you, you mentioned, the vendor, the Catholic Social Services hires staff to also. You know. Oversee the program that they're, that C H P is providing.
So I believe with.
And then, I just want to ask a follow up, and then how do you, do you have any people on staff that verify, you know, to go check? Make sure that their deliverables are being met by the contractors? You know, to check to make sure the services are being provided adequately, you know, I, I think there's a need to do that if you're paying for a service. So you guys do that with just existing resources at a hundred and fifty client cases per social worker?
Correct, yes, so I. I have been tasked by the Director to personally be the one to oversee that as part of my duties as well. So I am overseeing the contracts on, at this point until we can get more resources out to assist.
And was that discussed, I mean, was that discussed with Behavioral Health at the time of the transfer of these additional responsibilities back to DISIT? That, you know, they were simply only going to transfer the contracts and not additional staffing support back to the agency? Because it seems, I mean, you're relatively small by Gov Guam standards and yet you seem to have quite a significant task. So was that ever a discussion or, and then who made the decision to transfer these responsibilities back to DISIT?
I believe the decisions, I believe it was transferred back to us after the permanent injunction was lifted. Because of the fact that DISIT is mandated to provide these services. So it kind of was a better fit to come back to DISIT because the clientele were more or less individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities. And Jipway is more focused on mental health and mental illnesses, so. So it, it, it made sense for it to come back, I believe that was the whole. Thinking process behind it, so I believe that's, that's the reason why it came back to us.
And there was no discussion about providing more infrastructure to help facilitate. You know, the, not just the issuing of these contracts and announcements, but actually, you know, just the, the actual work involved in overseeing. And again, making sure that, you know, the client services are being provided, because it seems like. You're already overstressed with the amount of clients you need to support and the limited amount of staff resources to. To perform the.
Well, Guam Behavioral has, we have an interagency agreement with them so that they are providing support for us in regards to. The services that have already been provided through them, so you know, that's where we've worked on making those arrangements. So the support is there, it's just a matter of us trying to get more resources for personnel. But, you know, we, we are working together and it is a team effort and, and the transition is. Probably the hardest part is getting used to the new, this new programs coming on board. But, you know, with some institutional knowledge here on our side from one of our social workers, it helps as well. You know, we, we work as a team to try and get, to make sure the services are being provided. And Catholic Social Services has been very. Great about us building a relationship with them as well to provide the service and, and, and getting us up to speed with everything. And Jipway has been as well, we've been having a lot of transition meetings and just speaking on terms of, you know, supports and, and stuff. So I think, I think we'll, we're okay, but yes, getting more personnel would definitely be.
And then just one last question, I mean, with regards to your budget, you mentioned you, you did, you, you didn't have any additional funding provided for any additional positions? I know when we attended the hearing, the chairman had relayed that, you know, let us know what you need and we'll, we'll take care of it, so. What happened with that, did you get additional funding for additional social worker positions or?
We did not get funding, but we did put it in our stocking pattern, so in, in, in hopes that we would be able to get that funded.
So no additional increase for this fiscal, you know, this new fiscal year that we just started a couple of weeks ago?
No.
Wow, that's unfortunate, I'm sorry, I don't know all the details, I didn't vote for the budget, but I, I don't get to take responsibility for it. But that's, that's very disappointing to hear because I, I would, I would think. You know, just considering how small your agency is and the mandate that you have, that this would have been a critical area to put. Additional resources, because I'll tell you, if I was a social worker with a hundred and fifty cases to, to deal with on a daily basis. I'm, I'm sure it varies from one day to the next, but I, I, you know, I'd be looking for another job actually, if it was left up to me. You know, and I have no problem working, but that's, that looks like a pretty, pretty tall caseload. You know, just for a handful, very small handful of social workers that you have there. So I guess certainly that's something we need to, to look further into, but for this round, thank you for your responses and thank you. Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator, Senator Shelton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the team at DISIT and all of the partners who are on the call today for the information. It's a very extensive presentation, there's a lot of duties. There are a lot of duties that fall under DISIT's umbrella and so we're grateful for the work that you're doing. And I think most of my questions were answered with the details that you provided. To my colleague about the, the additional responsibilities that you took under your wing for this fiscal year. Coming from Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness. And you also spoke about the two percent law for the government of Guam. For individuals with disabilities to be working within the government of Guam, and I know that's something we've been working on together. We do have draft legislation to address that issue, so I'm glad that you brought that up again and we're, we're eager to push that as well. After a few tweaks today, I think, I wanted to get more information about the tracking system for V R cases. Can you discuss that a little bit further, what is the support that you need to, to update this tracking system?
Senator, thank you, I'll go ahead and defer that to Ms. Rita, she's the acting V R A and she has more institutional knowledge regarding the system itself. Um, Senator, thank you. I'll go ahead and defer that to Ms. Rita. She's she's the acting V R A and she has more institutional knowledge regarding the system itself.
Um, thank you. Um, the M I S system that V R is really been trying to um procure for has been it's been since um two thousand nineteen. We've gone in and tried to um purchase um a a system from a company. Uh, we're hoping for um, we've tried to work with a company that's already familiar with the the needs of V R and the reporting requirements. And so we did go, uh, it finally went out for um. It it went out recently, a few months ago. It was published and there was a protest, so it wasn't entertained in twenty twenty and but it was entertained just recently. And um, so now we're going to see if we could try to go in for sole source procurement. Because uh the protest um put it all at a halt just towards the end of September. And we're hoping that we could go in with sole source, because the the company that we're hoping to get is, like I said, has deals with at least thirty nine state other state V R agencies. They know exactly what is needed. We don't need to sit at with the new vendor and reinvent the wheel and try to go through all the reporting requirements, especially with the um the the limited staff, we have to have to sit there and go through the process with them. Currently, what we're doing is um, everything is being done manually. So a lot of our reports are, you know, it's they're being delayed because because of um having to, you know, um, retrieve the information from each counselor um, then the expenditures, things like that. So it is, we are desperately in need of um the V R tracking system.
I see. Thank you very much. Well, I'm glad to hear that you're pursuing another route, another option right now. And I'm also wondering, you spoke about some partnership with the Office of Technology. Is there any way to leverage that relationship for them to help you uh with this system in the meantime?
Well, um, in our efforts to procure the system, we do need the approval of the uh Office of Technology and they had approved it. Um, our grantor approved it, our, you know, not specifically the vendor, but um knowing that we need the system, it the funds were approved since um the beginning of two thousand nineteen and also in twenty twenty. And then we tried to spend the funds, because of course, in twenty twenty, it's very difficult to obtain jobs for clients that are are on services, you know, the the amount of funds that we spent were were a lot less than in the previous fiscal year prior to the pandemic. So we tried to put those resources and spend the money towards the purchase of a M I S system, which was um um, when it didn't go through, it looked like we were really not spending enough of our federal funds. So, you know, we get hit on both sides with the V R program, because they wonder why you're not spending the monies, but then you're kind of limited to a lot of the uh procurement things they want. Of course, the government wants you to spend um to get the lowest bid, things like that. So um, it kind of ties our hands into, you know, as far as purchasing.
Well, thank you for not giving up. I understand that's a critical uh part of this whole uh program and a a resource that you really need. So uh I'm glad to hear that there is a little bit of movement and please let us know how we can support you uh on our end to get that through. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. I have a couple of questions as well. I I'd like to start with the budget. So I'm looking at the governor's request for D C and it looks exactly like the amounts that were actually appropriated in our budget for D C. And uh, so I guess I want to ask the totals, they're the same uh from the general fund, the Healthy Futures Fund and the federal matching grants and aid are the same as the governor's request for F Y twenty two. So you but you've described having some um funding issues. We could further explain that, because we did give you the the totals that were requested.
Um, okay, we're we're given a ceiling to work with. And pretty much what was submitted, you know, we we initially, when you start the budget process, you go in with your wish list. And and in that wish list, we did have the positions that on that to include additional social workers in the Division of Support Services. Um, this is all I'm talking mostly of the general fund and the Healthy Futures Fund. So we did include it in there, but when we received our budget ceiling, um, we had to work with with the funds, the ceiling enough, of course. And so um, then we also submitted on there there's guidelines to follow. And it it does say to work with um warm bodies, you know, like to fund uh the current staffing, no additional staff. So what we did was we just included the positions in the staffing pattern, but zeroed out the funding. So the positions were there through the process and 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 yes, you're you're right, um, um, Madam Speaker. Um, but in the way the when the budget was passed, it it's still zero funding on the additional positions.
That correct. And my point is that's because the request was not made for additional funding for those positions. The request that was sent to the legislature. So you might be saying that you made this request of the governor, but the governor's request to the legislature is exactly what we gave. And I would like you to be very clear in the next budget cycle or even prior to that. If if this has additional needs that were not reflected in the budget, the governor's budget request, then that has to be put in writing and made very clear um to the governor, I think. And uh as to what your challenges are in operating right now. Uh, because and, you know, also to the budget chair here at the legislature. But it's it's very hard for us to advocate for more than what the governor has um decided based on her look at your agency that that you need, right? And uh so um, but I do hear that the number of clients that you are serving may may impose of actually a great me, maybe even greater than what you've talked about in just those additional positions. And um I'm concerned about that, especially when you say that the contract services are all maxed out, right? And and I I was wondering if you you said how many were on your waiting list? How many are on your list?
We don't, we have currently one person on the waiting list for Cara Dad.
All right.
We're it's managed, it's manageable right now, you know? And um the the administration is aware, Speaker, of our challenges. And with the influx of of new clients that have come in within the last, I don't know, six, six to eight months. So um they are working on trying to find funding for us to to support us in getting additional personnel. This is most especially for social workers.
Okay, great. And yeah, that brings me to my next question. I wanted to ask if you are expecting any A R P funds?
Um, I have not heard of any uh, to my knowledge and to the director's knowledge, we have not had any information on whether or not we're getting any A R P funding at this time, as of today.
All right. I'm I'm glad you talked about some of the challenges you're facing and your plans for the um the blind vendor program. If I may just concentrate on that for one second. Have you heard about an offer of help from the National Association of Blind Merchants? Which is a division of the National Federation of the Blind? Uh, and offer to help with the blind vendor program for Guam?
Um, there are, there are more than um one um blind vendor, um, you know, committees out there that um may reach out, especially if someone on Guam is reaching out to them. Um, but we we also are working with other state agencies and our grantor um more specifically on um trying to establish something here on Guam for the uh Randall Shepherd Program. But.
All right. Well, it was brought to my attention that there has been an offer by the National Association of Blind Merchants, Mr. Terry Smith. And I just wanted to, I guess, put that in front of you and make sure that your your plans that you've laid out for us kind of put this out all the way to twenty twenty three. Uh, and I wanted to you to explore this all offer as well. And just to be sure that your plans are indeed as fast as possible, right? Is that uh is that the the quickest that we could try to implement a program like this? Based on all the resources you have available to you? And so I I heard it during your presentation that, so you're working with other trying to get the um the program going? But that you might, if you get this program going, need to hire additional personnel in in the division? I mean, in the department?
Yes, that's correct. Um, we are also communicating with Hawaii. They they have the blind vendor program there and um it's it's like a a whole division. Um, um, they have the the vocational rehabilitation and then they also have a section there that handles the blind um Randall Shepherd Program. So we would uh definitely need to um hire more staff, at least a few to work with um um establishing this 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 program, which is probably why it never was uh established in the past. Um, because it does take, um, you know, there's a lot of research that needs to be done and the and that's the reason why we reached out to Hawaii, so that we can get their assistance. Because what we've done here on Guam is uh we send, we were sending our clients to Hawaii Hope Pono Center. And and that's the um, that's where they were getting a lot of the training that they receive for mobility training and things like that at the Hope Pono Center in Hawaii. But we're working with the Volk Rehab Agency in Hawaii and reaching out to them to assist us with establishing the policies, procedures and things like that for the blind vendor program. In line with that, we're we're will also be have to work with our grantor agency.
Okay, um. If you could just check out that offer and make sure that uh everything that you've got in front of you is is all the resources that we can uh use, right? And uh, so another question I wanted to ask is, did you submit a request for A R P funds?
I believe the director did, um, Madam Speaker. I'm not quite sure. Um, like I mentioned earlier, we have not gotten the we have done, I don't have an updated on anything regarding A R P funding at this time.
Okay, I think at the budget hearing, I I'm looking at my own notes. Now, these are not formal, but at the budget hearing, it looks like she said she requested three million. But I I wasn't able to discern the proposed use of this money, if you got it. Do you know if you received the A R P funds, what you would use them on?
Um, I believe what we would use the funding for would be most especially because of the challenges we have now would be to expand services that we already have in place. Like, for example, getting more um services for to provide more slots for um our three programs of services that we did um just acquire, as well as uh addressing some of the gaps in services like adult daycare, um providing more, maybe providing more training to uh family members for caregiving services and and mostly to expand our services to so that our community can avail to more services that are in dire need right now.
Okay. All right. And so you talked about moving accessibility of the Gov Guam, especially their online resources and issues with enforcing the two percent law that you're trying to resolve. So um thank you for your work in the in that regard. I look forward to, yes, uh, those being completed hopefully in the next few months. There was an attorney, Summer Fleck, who who had asked, what happened to the D C C mandated in seventeen G C A A four one three zero eight and the concept of nothing about us without us? I'm not familiar with what he's asking. Are you are you able to?
I'm sorry, Speaker, I'm not familiar either. I I can do my research on that and get back to you. I don't.
All right, we'll send you the questions in writing as well. I want you to know that uh when we announced this hearing in the paper, we did receive several letters, emails, uh discussing the blind vendor program. So there there seems to be a lot of interest and I want to show you those people who are interested in it and and so that you can also address that. So.
Madam Speaker, may I say a word, please?
Evelyn, Evelyn, yeah, in this oversight hearing, we were allowing the senators to ask questions first, but
Can you hear me?
Can you tell me your question? Can you say to me your question?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, Evelyn. Can you hear me? Hello? Okay. Evelyn? All right. If there's anyone who else who has a question, please uh post it up in the chat room. Or uh if I could ask Mr. Alerta, I know you've been uh you're the head of the Guam Developmental Disability camp, supposed to be addressing the gaps in in services and advocating for additional needs. I was wondering uh if you had any additional insight that you could provide as to what we may be able to accomplish in F Y twenty twenty two?
Thanks so much, Madam Speaker and Senators. Um, yes, um, oh, my name is Jimmington with the Guam D D Council. Uh, we've been working with not just our trade agency partners, the Guam Legal Services Corporation and Guam Cedars to um to um to kind of address some of the issues that have been outstanding with people with developmental disabilities. But we have worked closely with um Phyllis Long Guero and Michelle Perez. Um, the governor did ask us as as the D D Council is a um uh, is it a the executive director is a is an is a position appointed by the governor. Um, uh, so I I'm a cabinet level position and I have worked with um this in the past. And we were actually tasked to identify some of the gaps that were outstanding for individuals um with disabilities. And uh, Michelle Perez did speak about that earlier. Um, we obviously, the pandemic has kind of taken to the forefront a lot of things. But uh we did address some programs and a lot of them um are in the process of being addressed uh with the return of some of the services that were previously with Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center uh through the permanent injunction. So as those services return back under the responsibility of D C, we're looking to uh obviously expand and improve on those existing services, but also add different components to um to additional services that will complement them. And some of them are like the the adult uh center for um for families who who for previous years have had to either take a reduction in their work hours or have to have have had to completely um stop working to care for our family members who have disabilities. So um that's one of the things that we're looking at, helping provide. Obviously, funding is going to be a um a challenge. And um with the already tight budget, we're trying to see if there's some kind of grants that maybe uh the Department of Integrated Services for individuals that is supposed to go after. And if there's any other um leveraging of funds we can do. In in the D D Council, we cannot go after any grants, because we're not a direct service provider. We're actually just an advocacy arm of what's called the Try Agencies in each of the states and territories. But um our 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 council members are are members of um the different uh boards and commissions in the different areas of the disability community. So um they provide valuable input on some of the services that are needed, some of the um expansion of services that are needed, some of the improvement in services that are needed. Um, but um in in terms of supporting this, they've been a great partner and they obviously have come across many, many challenges, challenges that I can't speak speak to, because we do not face the same challenges uh uh financial wise or or otherwise. Uh, because we do get our money strictly from the federal government. We don't get any local funding. Um, so so um they have mandates that they have to meet. And I can tell you that in my discussions with them and also working with them, uh, Miss Young Guero and Miss Perez are doing what they can with um the limited resources, which is brought up already, uh that they that they do have. Miss Young Guero and Miss Perez are doing what they can with the limited resources, which is brought up already, that they that they do have. But but I do want to say that. The the D D Council is is standing by to support in however way we can. And also, if there's any input that's needed from any other disability related organizations in their community. We're more than open to working and collaborating with 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 all of those people. Thanks, Madam Speaker. Thank you guys so much for your support.
Thanks very much, Mr. Alerta. All right, if I could just go back, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back again to the budget. This is Speaker Chirai. I'm going to go back again and ask the deputy director some additional questions regarding the budget. So I'm looking now at the the director did send to me in writing her wish list for ARP funds. And the three million that I referred to earlier was strictly for the three contractual items. So not for any additional items, three million for those three contractual items. Group home, adult daycare and assistive living facility. But does your current budget cover these three contracts? So any ARP money would go to expanding the number of clients under those contracts? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct, Senator, I mean, Speaker, I apologize. Yes, but we also wanted to expand. A lot more with the adult daycare program and the and then C H P and R S P. Not the assisted living is more something that we were trying to do with like a day, a day service. That's the that is the vision. I believe how we this sees it as trying to get more day programs so that we don't have to use so many group homes. The 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 idea is to keep the families together, right? Not to have that individual end up having to stay in a group home. Because they can't be, because the family has to go out and work and can't can't be home with the individual. So trying the concept of trying to get more day programs out there for severe individuals who are with severe disabilities. To stay within the family unit and not have to be placed in a group home twenty four seven is the concept we're trying to use for for. Expanding the programs, you know, because that. Where it's all a village, it takes a village, right? And not just keeping them in that one home. We want to make sure that they're they are built to all these other. Services and stay with the family is the main concept. And that's the director and I have.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And then there's a there's another wish list in addition to the three million. And that is thirty thousand dollars for a vehicle. It says D S S has not had an operable vehicle for the past few years. Six thousand for equipment, two thousand for supplies, thirty three thousand for contractual. And four hundred sixty four thousand seven hundred for personnel. And I guess that's consistent with what you've said here today is that personnel is what you need in order. And that increasing your personnel is going to allow you to expand services. Is that correct? Your current services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And this this estimate of personnel include personnel to handle the blind vendors program?
The personnel that you're seeing there, I believe, is specific to the Division of Support Services, Speaker. The blind vendor program would be funded through the D V Rs, the D V R federal federal funded, federally funded side is how. So the specific. The dollar amount and the programs that you had mentioned earlier are specific to the support services side, which is mostly, which is literally funded by the general fund, local funding, so.
All right, so if you wanted to hire an additional personnel to help with the blind vendor program. Would that have to be locally funded?
No, that would be federally funded.
Okay, so what is preventing you from doing that?
We need to work out the policies and procedures to establish the program. And then, of course, we. Will be working with agencies like the closest is Hawaii. To get the program started and then hire. The personnel that's needed for that. Some of the training that needs to be done. If you know Hawaii is willing to assist us with training those clients going through their program first before. Because they need to, they need to qualify for the program, for the blind, for the Randall Shepherd program. So we hire, I mean, the the personnel in the future, once we start working out the policies, procedures, things like that.
All right. And so so if you get the procedures and policies in place, you will be able to get training. You will be able to eventually hire with federal funds personnel necessary to manage the program.
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. All right, I didn't want it to be said, I it was sounding earlier like the impediment to moving forward on this program was that you needed personnel. But it's kind of like the reverse. You need to establish some of this program first, and then you will be able to be eligible for federal funding for personnel, right? Okay, all right, then. Okay, so so if you've received the funds that the governor requested for your current operations and the current contracts. Did you say earlier that you were short on the amounts needed for the current contracts?
No, ma'am, we actually were, we have acquired the amount, the total amount needed, so. Yes.
Okay, then, great, thank you. I want to thank again Cedars, I know that they have to leave, but and all the members of the Developmental Disabilities Council, all the clients of. This is who have tuned in today on on this Zoom and and watching on TV or listening on TV. And. I want to thank you all for your work in the presentation and for your continued work in this regard. I know that it's a challenging agency with so few personnel. And we need to, I had a long discussion with one of the clients who, you know, has reminded us that. Our goal in Guam should be integration, right? Integration with every government agency should be its own expertise, you know, his its own expert in how to make things accessible. How to make their services accessible. And I I believe we have still a lot of work to do in the government alone, right? And so I'm very glad about the website and the technology progress that you're making. I'd like to work with you further to really expand so that every government agency feels responsible, that they don't need the D C, you know, to be. Policing them, that they are policing themselves and making sure that they are as accessible as possible, including us here at the legislature. I know that we we are getting suggestions all the time about how we can improve. So I appreciate those suggestions and we're going to continue to try to do that. Senators, is there anything else that you would like to ask or add? Before we conclude? If not, then Deputy Director, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Yes, Speaker, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you again to all of you for really supporting our mission here at this. And I know it's it is a challenge, as we all know. And that I think as we, if we continue to collaborate and work as a team, I mean, I think we can get to the next step and level of trying to provide services. For every, for all people with disabilities on Guam and their families. And I just really wanted to really show my appreciation for for all of you that have. Reached out to us personally here at this and have actually asked us for some assistance or just guidance, but also have given us the avenue to really. Try and promote what we're trying to do on this end too. And I really appreciate that from all the senators and as well as our nonprofit organizations, as well as the governor and the lieutenant governor for continuously supporting us. And we all know it's a challenge. It's not just Guam, it's nationwide. We're trying to provide the best quality of services for all of our individuals with disabilities. And I think if we continue to work as a team, as one whole, then I think we can get there slowly, but we will get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director. This is Speaker Chirai again, and I apologize, but I had some questions sent to me by one of the clients. And if I could just ask these. Why would D O A be the one to determine eligibility of the two percent law instead of this it who works closely with the clients? And I know you said that that was the case, but if you could just maybe further explain.
Yes, ma'am, because I believe with the two percent law. And I know I've discussed this with Senator Shelton, as well as Speaker and some other senators. That it's 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 kind of like a catch twenty two with the two percent law. D V R cannot monitor who is in compliance because we are not the H R division of the government agency of the line agencies. But on top of that, I believe that. This is believes that. D V R should not be the sole entity to provide. To provide. Individuals who can meet the two percent. In other words, I'm hoping I'm answering this correctly to the constituent. But. D V R cannot be the only and should not be the only entity because there are individuals with disabilities. And I can speak from personal experience as a transition teacher with D O E for the past fifteen to eighteen years. Then not all individuals and not individuals with disabilities will want to go through D V R. And so some individuals would like to go and specifically apply on their own to a line agency or another government of one agency and be counted as part of the two percent by self identifying. But because of the fact that the laws states that they have to be a D V R client. They cannot be counted as the D V as part of the two percent. Now, D O A is the sole agency that actually takes in these applications and will determine whether or not they are eligible for that. Or they they rate in to be eligible for that specific position, jobs disposition. So D O A would be the best entity to determine how many people have been, what agency is in compliance with the two percent based on the self identifying factor when they apply for their job. So that would be my response.
Do you have information regarding the compliance of the the government agencies? How many are in compliance and how many are not?
I do not, I can, I can try and get that information to you, but I do not have that information.
All right, okay. The other question was personal assistance services. What is the status? Are there any additional requests for personal assistance services that you have not been able to accommodate? And what is the status of those? Are you, is that going to be something that will be accommodated or are you at your max? Or please explain.
Yes, ma'am, so we are at our max, as mentioned earlier, with regards to personal assistant. Services and as mentioned as well, we are taking in referrals and we will continue to take in referrals for the service. Once this, once there are vacancies available through Catholic Social Services, they will be the net, there it's a wait, you know, it's a waitlist. So that's how it is. However, if additional funding is provided, then like as mentioned earlier, we will expand the programs. So at this point, it's, you know, and you know, it's it's basically a matter of either someone vacating a slot or. Expansion of the program. And at this point, we're kind of at on a waitlist status at this point.
All right, so we're looking at a, this is in dire need of four million dollars from the ARP funds or some other funding source in order to. Increase services under these three contracts, increased daycare especially. And also. To increase the personnel in in the department in order to. Address services that are currently being provided to better address and further address. All right.
Speaker, can I just go ahead and tap on that as well? I think also we need to understand, we need to also keep in mind that although we may. We also need to look at, there's also a scarcity in caregiving services and personnel, right? So even if, for example, if, for example, we are able to provide the service, I mean, provide the funding, if there is no personnel to. Provide that service, then regard, I I meaning contractual services, then we are also, you know, at the mercy of that as as getting people that identify to provide that service. But yes, on this, on this, the stance of this, it is if we can expand the service by getting fun, by funding, additional funding, then we will do so. I think you're unmute, ma'am.
Thank you for that. I'm expecting that you will continue to advocate then for those funds. And please keep us informed as to whether you receive them or if you receive word that you are not going to be receiving those, because I do believe those are critical at this point. And. All right, what about the, so the question asked earlier by Attorney Summer Fleck was regarding composition of the division of support services for individuals with disabilities council. So this C is the council, Division of Support Services for Individuals with Disabilities Council. Is there an issue regarding the composition of that council?
I am not, I do know that there is, by statute, I believe there is supposed to be a council, but I don't believe there has been one for some time. Well, we have, we are looking into addressing, we have been addressing that as well as some to determine how we can get that council up and running again. Yes.
All right, okay. Thank you very much, Senators, we're good? Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. And we will conclude this oversight hearing for today. I know that there are, there are many other questions. I'm going to send them to you, Director, and ask that you provide a response, maybe in writing, so that we can also share that with anyone who calls our office and asks the same. Title, and if you could give us, keep us posted on your very. Detailed plans regarding the blind vendor program because of the amount of calls that we've received regarding that. And also, of course, the federal funds, as we discussed, and any other issues that that. And if we need to change the two percent law, if you could please give us a recommendation in writing, I will be happy to sponsor that and and bring move that along so that we can facilitate. People who can join in that program.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks. There being no additional testimony, this conference, this oversight hearing is now adjourned. The time is two thirty two P M, sitos mas, sad yes.